I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on Monday, November 18th, 2013. Please join Councilman Holman in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Lord, this is the time we choose to, as a nation, say thank you for all the graces in our life. In particular, I would like at this time for us to recognize the superior staff that we have and their dedication to excellence for our community. Thank you for the leadership and the activity of our fire and police who make our citizens' safety their priority. Thank you for your guidance to our leaders throughout the past year and ask you to continue that our leaders may make this the city we know it can be and continue on our path. For all of these things, we say thank you, Lord. Amen.
This chair does not want to work. Thank you, Councilman Holman. All right, a roll call. As you see, Bill is not here. Councilman Stiff is not here tonight. So I need a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Stiff.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Pizzillo and a second from Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, on communication, we've had a change. We will not have any communication tonight. December 9th, Judy Swantanic will give the volunteer coordinator, the volunteer coordinator will recognize groups that participated in the Make a Difference Day. All right, so put that on your calendar, December 9th. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. And let me assure you that there is an item that was taken off the agenda. So they're able to speak on that? I want to clear it with the...
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that was my assumption, too. So I do have one speaker card. And is Jeff Boyd in the audience? Jeff Boyd? Okay, he probably, maybe he got the information that we have delayed that to the next meeting. All right. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak? All right, with that, let's move on. And we'll go to the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read consent agenda items? No. Yeah. One, 6.1 and 6.2, by title only.
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting and a special meeting held on October 28th, 2013, and a regular meeting held on November 4th, 2013. Item 6.2, approval request from Kristin Zul, owner applicant for Casey Holdings LLC doing business as Clubhouse Grill for a person transfer Series 6 liquor license, number 060-700-51, located at 14175 West Indian School Road, number C1.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone for the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have a question, please, on 6.2.
All right, could the staff come up on 6.2?
Mayor and council?
Yes, my question, Sue, is do we now have a new owner of the Clubhouse Grill and this is why they're transferring this license?
Yes, we have a new owner. Kristin Zul is the new...
Sue, can you speak up just a little bit louder, please?
Kristin Zul is the new owner of the business. So a Series 6 liquor license is transferable from owner to owner, person to person or location to location. And for that reason, this is not a new liquor license application.
Okay, has they already, have they already transferred ownership?
Yes, the applicant is in the audience if you'd like to have them speak on that.
Just wanted to know if they've already transferred.
Yes.
Knotting his head, yes.
That's my only question.
Is that it?
It's in my neighborhood, so I'm, that's why I was asking if we had a new owner. Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, with that, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6.0.
All right, let's go to the business agenda. Now, we're changing this a little bit, and I send my apologies to the Austin Restaurant and Bar, but we're going to go to 7.5 and, 4 and 7.5 due to personal reasons, and I think you're all aware of that. So let's just go ahead to that. And the next two items are to consider approving a request for the preliminary plats for Ventilia Phase 1 and 2. Steve, Carisha will present both items together, and we will vote separately on each of them.
Thank you, Mayor. The next two items are Phases 1 and 2 preliminary plats for La Ventilia. This, both properties here are located within the Canyon Trails planned area development, I-10 to the north, and then near Saraval. Properties were originally designated as townhome in the PAD, and that land use designation would have allowed development at 8 to 15 dwelling units per acre. What the applicant is proposing is a court home development roughly between 6 and 7.6 units per acre. So they're requesting to develop at a lesser density than that would have been allowed And this is the current proposed development plan, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Back in September, this item was before the council, and council did express some concerns with the design, mostly with Phase 2 there, just south of I-10.
Excuse me, would you give me the pager on, please, with these maps in our, in our agenda? What's the page number?
Mayor, council, I apologize, they're, the exhibits, the attachments from...
132, 130, thank you.
You got it now, while?
I will be, thank you, Joanne just gave me the page number.
And I apologize, this one is not in the packet. This is one just was put together recently.
Could you speak up just a little bit louder, please?
I'm not sure our mics are on. Can you hear me?
I think the system's a little differently, different now, and so you don't get that feedback, so that's why.
Okay.
Is your light on?
My light's on.
All right, then you're on.
No, my light's off, sorry.
Oh, the light was off. Now the light is on. All right, is that better?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, council members. The diagram on the bottom is the design that was shown in September. And part of the concerns that were voiced were the look of that street and some of the open space within that Phase 2. What the applicant did, and that's shown in this drawing here, is they tried to break up that street. And what they did was they removed two lots and added a greenway here and here, and put trails within those greenways. And they also opened up the open space around that cul-de-sac there. And the intent was to break up the street scape and as well as provide more connections to the surrounding trails within overall Canyon Trails development. So going back now, this is the plan that's being proposed now, with the changes. We're looking at approximately 219 total court home lots, 110 in Phase 1 and 109 in And this is the landscape plan that's being proposed. Those green areas there are existing areas within Canyon Trails. Those are developed with a trail system that runs all throughout the Canyon Trails community. And what this development will do is provide trail connections to that existing system. And those will be provided at several points along here, as well as there at the west There's also an existing tot lot and activity area there within Canyon Trails that this development will also provide sidewalk connections and access for these residents for use.
I thought we had a slide that showed that, a little red dot there, or is, okay. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that from the slide before.
And the development itself, as you can see from the plan, it will be, typically it'll be a pod of six. You have a couple pods of 10 units. And this is another exhibit from the staff report. You can see how the six lots access around a private motor court that then accesses the private street. So all six garages access the private court. Four of the front doors access the private court, the back four. And along the street, you have those two homes, they front the street. The intent is with this design, what the applicant was hoping is that as you went down the street, you were looking at fronts of homes versus mostly garages. The garages would be all in the back. But back to the pods, again, this design does go with use and benefit easements, so people's yards go across lot lines. And the colors on this diagram show that each lot and their corresponding yard area, so they, each homeowner gets a larger yard than they would otherwise have if they followed And this was a question that also came up at the previous council hearing. What was that main amenity going to look like for this development? And what the applicant is proposing is a pool facility with changing rooms, bathrooms, and also a large grassy area for the residents.
Georgia, can I ask a question?
I can't hear him.
Can I ask a question?
Can you wait?
Okay.
Can you wait until the question hour, or?
Well, I, I...
Are you having problems?
Well, no, I...
If I could just ask, on the last slide, please? I can't see what it says on the left-hand side of the screen, but there was one thing on there I didn't understand, the cabanas, but... Where are the cabanas?
That's what they call the brick things, right? I think she's trying, is that the brick, go back to that drawing, you can see it, okay?
The covering.
That she's asking for. Right there, you see the brick areas with the...
And that's not the bathrooms? I thought that was the bathrooms.
Mayor, council, the cabanas are, I guess it's more like a trellis structure, those, they were having those along the pool here.
So that's D and all of those, but they're that kind of structure, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And these would be the bathrooms.
All right, thank you.
And all of that pool structure and all those amenities is located right here within Overall, they have almost 10 acres of open space throughout this development. Again, this exhibit is showing the various trails and sidewalks that they will use to connect to the wider Canyon Trails development. All streets within the development will be private. All the landscaping along the streets within the motor court will be maintained by the HOA. The main point of access for these residents to Saraval Avenue and then to I-10 will likely be from Portland where they'll have a signalized intersection. They may also use this point here. So they will have two, and they will have a signalized intersection of Portland. Mayor, council members, the applicant did attempt to address the concerns voiced by council. These are the changes they're proposing. Staff has reviewed it. We find it consistent with the PAD, with our subdivision regulations, and therefore we are recommending approval of both phases subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would there, anyone in the audience like to speak? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. First of all, thank you for juggling your agenda for...
You're quite welcome.
My behalf.
Our condolences go out to you and your family.
Thank you. I will not repeat Steve's presentation. Between the written staff reports and your hearing before and the presentation tonight, you have a lot of information. We appreciate staff's recommendation, we appreciate the commission's recommendation, and we appreciate the opportunity that we were afforded to work with Sheri and Steve and others on various adjustments and improvements that are made to the plan. We do believe it's a better plan today than it was a couple months ago. We hope that you and all on the council agree. As you know, it's merely preliminary plat, it's not a rezoning, and it's really to provide on this infill site the same type of housing that KB just opened in Phoenix at Tatum and Greenway, which we believe looks good and is being well-received and will be successful, and we believe it'll be successful here. If you have questions, I will certainly do my best to answer them, or others who are here with me can assist in answering, but if, Mayor, you and the council are comfortable with the recommendations in front of you, so are we. If you want a more detailed presentation, we'll give it. Otherwise, I'll be happy to sit down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do here is we're going down to number 1, 13-510. And what I'm going to need a motion for is to approve a request for the preliminary plat for La Ventilia Phase 1 subdividing 14.4 acres, 40 acres, 48 acres into 110 single-family court home lots and nine tracks located at the northwest corner of Saraval Avenue and Portland within the Canyon Trails planned area development subject to stipulations. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
I appreciate the effort and the changes made on there. I really do believe, again, that you have a better, better product now than you did the first time around, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Osborne?
No, I'm sorry, I was pointing at Sheri.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, well, we'll go down to Councilman Loretano.
I just want to say thank you, the applicant, for making the changes. We do need this type of density in our city, and we have a lot of people that, not everybody wants a giant yard and their own pool, so I think this will be a great fit. And thank you for adding the extra green and open space in areas. I appreciate that. I think it'll be a great development.
Councilman Campbell?
Am I off again? I'm on. Mine doesn't work.
Green light. It's not coming on.
I actually, Joe Schmidt, we went over and went all through the subdivision, and I want to thank the developer for adding the additional green work. I think it's going to work great. Is it on again? Okay, sorry. And I really want to thank you for doing that. I think it's going to be a beautiful addition over there. I love how you're using almost every bit of land that you possibly can, yet buffering them from the freeway. And we do thank you, and we thank you for being so open to our concerns and willing to address them. We really thank you for doing that for us.
Any other comments? Well, I'd like to make a comment. I wasn't there, I wasn't here that night. That was the one night that I was not in council, and I read all the minutes, and I want to congratulate council on being open and making those suggestions to make it a better neighborhood, while in their, in their feelings that it needed a little bit more. And then I really appreciate the client coming to the table, KB Homes, and making the changes. Personally, on a sales side, because that's always my side, I think this community will go rapidly. It's a convenient community, and that's what people are looking for nowadays. And with the I-10, 303 up there, I think it's going to sell out fast. So with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So let's go down to the next one. I'm going to need a motion to approve the request for a preliminary plat for La Ventilia Phase 2, subsidizing, subdividing 18.56 acres into 109 single-family court home lots and six tracks located at the southwest corner of Saraval Avenue and Interstate 10 within the Canyon Trails planned area development subject to stipulations. So I need a motion?
So moved.
Whoops.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Holman and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion.
Mayor?
Councilman Osborne?
I do appreciate bringing this case back and making some changes. I do know that this is a preliminary plat, and so I would like to add to the discussion. I have a hard time with this phase just because of the location to the freeway. And it's, you know, it is items that we need within the city, it is a good plan, it's all of, all of the above, it's just not in the location that I'd like it to be, next to the freeway. So when you come back for the final plats, the things that I would hope you'll be considering would be the dual-plane windows, sound buffering, I forget the answer from the previous discussion on the I-10 wall. I don't remember when that comes within, the sound wall, when it comes within the phase, and, and actually what those decibel levels will be. And so, you know, this will be one of those products that is something that's needed in the city, but at the same time, we want to protect our citizens as best as possible in giving them those sound barriers and buffers. So that was my comment.
I think that answer could be now. I heard it today. So does somebody want to address the answer about sound barriers, when those will go Thank you, Mr. Bull.
I don't want to steal any of staff's thunder, but I believe that the sound wall is to be completed in December of '13, and then other improvements are to be completed, such as Frontage Road and so...
Wait, this, next month?
Next month, yeah.
Great.
No.
Yes.
Mayor, ask our city engineer as well, because he does have some timeframes that can help out.
I would have asked him right away, but I saw no motion back there that he was coming. Thank you.
Mayor and council, the information that I've received from ADOT is that the sound walls will be completed in February, March of 2014. It'll be completed before the Frontage Roads open, about two months later.
Yeah, because this is going to be, construction takes how long? When do they, what is the estimated date that you think this community will be, start selling? Now, you can always sell out of a trailer and not build yet, but, so just tell me when you, when actually, structure will be there.
Probably even more to the point as to when we would expect house closings to occur for people to move in.
Yeah, that's very well said.
We would expect that to occur in early 2015, and then we would expect to start, of course, in Phase 1 and then move on into Phase 2. So we believe all freeway-related improvements will be completed long before we're delivering any houses.
While I appreciate, the other entities that, with the builder themselves, you know, adding those extra amenities as dual-plane windows and, you know, different kinds of insulation to make it, you know, a little more soundproof is something...
We understand. We also have, as you're probably aware, approximately 100-foot setback off of the freeway right of way to the closest home. So we, too, want to make sure that it, while it's an infill location, we also want to make sure we're delivering quality homes in a quality environment to, to our customers.
I just want to make this clear, because it always alerts me when someone says double- pane windows and the, and the right amount of insulation, soundproof. There are standards, and so normally those standards meet that requirement for the location that are. So I guess you could address that if one of the KB people want to come up, if you want to address that to assure Councilman Osborne that that is...
We will do so.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Andrew Gasparo, 4127 East Van Buren. I'm with KB Homes. I'm the director of land for KB, and yes, there are standards for our building components, and we do intend to have double-pane windows, we do intend to have, you know, a lush vegetation in that 100-foot landscaped area so that it's not an issue between noise and livability, if you will, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions, Molly's up here? Joanne? Councilman Osborne? All right, thank you. Councilman Holman? Wait a minute, did you have a question?
Well, no, no, it was, I understand, I understand standards, I mean, you know, in other homes that are further away from the freeway, you still have standards that we appreciate, and it was just more of a little height than to that sound decibel barrier that I was looking for. And I just gave those as ideas, as dual-pane windows and, you know, other insulation, because those are the things that help with, you know, some of that, that noise control.
And I can understand your question. I just questioned it because I, knowing the business, I just didn't want the public to think, because normally in neighborhoods where they have streets, that's important to all builders, because there's noise in every neighborhood. Although, this is probably, you're right, it's off, right off adjacent to I-10 and 303, so there is some additional noises. So I just wanted to clarify that. Councilman Holman, you had a question?
And this is a curiosity thing. Is, will it be rubberized in that area, the freeway?
Probably not.
Because I was amazed at the difference that rubberized, I live just south of a freeway as well, and the rubberized made a huge difference.
Yes, it will be.
That's awesome. That really, really helps.
That's not a bad sales tool. What can I tell you? You might want to use that. All right, great. All right, all questions have been asked? All right, fine, okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one opposed. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 ayes and 1 nay. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, let's go backwards. We'll go to now, 7.1... And we'll go to now, 7.1, to consider approving a new Series 12 liquor license, 12079667, for Austin's Restaurant and Bar, located at 530 North Estrella Parkway, Suite C5-CA. Sue Brumgart to present, our deputy city clerk. Sue?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm back before you to present a new liquor license application. Teresa Morris is the agent applicant for GJ Brands LLC, doing businesses as Austin's Restaurant and Bar. Austin's is located at 530 North Estrella Parkway. This location was previously occupied by the Native New Yorker Restaurant. Native New Yorker went out of business on August 5th of this year. Austin's took possession of the space on August 15th and recently opened the business. They are operating currently with a interim liquor license permit, which is on file for Native New Yorker until this application is approved. All employees serving alcohol will complete state certification training, and there are no licensed childcare facilities within 300 feet of the location. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience, if you do have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right. If not, then could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Loretano and a second from Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. I'm going to go way down. Councilman Campbell?
Well, my husband and I have already eaten at Austin's, and we're delighted to welcome them to Goodyear, and we thank them for wanting to locate here with us, and we wish them the very best.
Councilman Osborne?
Ditto.
Well, that took a long time. On this side, anybody? Okay, thank you very much. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 6-0.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so we're going to go to item 7.2, to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed text amendment to various sections of the zoning ordinance pertaining to a brewery, brew pub, and microwave breweries. Open for public hearing, Steve Caracci. Again, Planner Three will present.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. A lot of this information was provided in a work session, so I'll try to just go over it quickly. But we are proposing a text amendment to allow brew pubs, breweries, and microbreweries within the city. Right now, we only have a definition for bar or microbrewery, and that's about it. And that's right there at the top. So basically, that definition says you may not have a microbrewery in Goodyear based on their general form of how they operate today, that this would preclude them from opening in the city. There's a domestic microbrewery. It's a Series 3 liquor license that they will receive from the state, allows them to produce up to 40,000 barrels of beer. And these are the three new uses that are proposed with the text amendment. Basically, our intent was to offer some flexibility, three different classifications that the microbrewers could look at, potentially use one of these to open up an operation within the city. Brewery is mostly focused on beer production, distribution. The brew pub is mostly what you've seen with, it's a restaurant, small brewery function. Microbrewery, kind of a mix. It's more the craft brewer, the businessman or businesswoman operating, building up beer and offering food on the side. And this is where we're proposing, since the brewery is the more production-based one, it would be in the I-2, general industrial. Brew pub in the C-2, and we would propose that the microbrewery could go in the C-2 and I-1. And those would be permitted, permitted uses. By special use permit, what we're proposing is a brewery that produces more than 40,000 barrels of beer a year, a brewery with live music or entertainment. And then for brew pubs and microbreweries, those with live music or entertainment closer than 300 feet. And also the microbrewery that produces more than 15,000 barrels of beer. A lot of these changes that you've, well, a lot of these items that you're looking at came from council's direction to staff at the work session, and part of that direction was to offer more opportunities for entertainment within the city. And what was originally proposed was a separation of 500 feet from residential. And what we're proposing now is brew pub or microbrewery, that that line is now 300 feet. If you are 300 feet and farther from a residential zone, you can have live music and entertainment as an accessory use by right. If you're closer than 300 feet, then we'd ask you to come before the city and before the council and get a special use permit. We also removed the reference to one entertainer or one venue, as that was seen as limiting. And what we did was, it's just now 5,000 square feet, and you do what you need to do within that area. And then, like discussed just before, the brewery, there was no entertainment or live music allowed with the brewery. What was directed to staff was, allow it as an option with a special use permit. And looking at 300 feet, we looked at other cities, what they did within the valley. For models, the 300 feet is used by Avondale and Glendale. Phoenix does use 500 feet, but we did have a couple cities where we could look at and see what they've done. And just some of the developments within the city, I apologize, it's hard to see. This red line there is roughly 300 feet from Estrella Vista to the west. So anything beyond that red line, they could have live music, entertainment as an accessory use by right. If a use should develop any closer, they would need to come before the council for special use permit. This is Supertarget Canyon Trails Town Center, again, the red line, everything to the east of that, and the Canyon Trails Residential, everything west of that line could have the live music and entertainment. And this is the Pro's Regional Center, with Rio Paseo to the north, again, shows that red line, kind of that 300-foot mark. And this is Parkway Village, just south of Walmart, where we do have potential interest in a microbrewery, in that building there. There's the red line showing 300 feet from the residential zoning in Canyon Trails there to the southwest. And basically, the intent of these exhibits is to show you that the 300 feet does give you a separation from the residential areas, that if you do want to go closer, that is still an option, but you do need to come before staff and the council and get approval of a special use permit. And this is, I won't read all of this, but this is just what we're proposing with the And the brew pub. And what we noted here was, on the second bullet there, the live music entertainment, it's got to be further than 300 feet if it's an accessory use by right. And that all noise generated by the live music entertainment needs to be fully enclosed within the building, so that we're trying to avoid noise trespass outside and that it could get to residential areas. And same thing with the microbrewery, the 300 feet, and that all noise needs to be contained within the building. And for consistency purposes, since we were allowing the microbreweries, the breweries and the brew pubs, some live music entertainment, we looked at restaurants and bars and changed it so that they as well have the 300-foot separation, the requirement to keep all their noise contained within the building. And just a quick summary, this is again, the three uses, their production maximums, and if there's a separation from residential. As part of this adoption of this text amendment, staff did speak with the Arizona Craft Brewers Guild. They were, they had no concerns with this ordinance, since the intent was to open up the market for these types of uses. So they did not have any concerns or questions with this adoption. Went to PNZ Commission in August, passed through the commission. No one from the public spoke against this item. Council work section in September, and to date, staff has not received any opposition. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. That was a very good presentation. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Does anyone in the audience, would anyone in the audience like to speak?
And Mayor, council, if I could, I apologize. In looking over everything, language has been passed through the council that will show some changes we're proposing. In trying to make things consistent, we didn't quite get everything. So what we're proposing to do...
Let's see, they have to, you read it for the second one, right? Seven, the 7.2, because the second one has to do with ordinance, and that has to do, move to approve the ordinance. So the first one, we're going to vote on here in a moment, when I close the public hearing. So it really goes to the Adopt Ordinance 1312. I have to do these separately, so, okay?
7.2 is the resolution.
So when do we ask questions? Wait, I'm still in the, I'm still in the, you can't, until I, until I get out of the public meeting, public hearing, okay?
Yeah. Mayor, you have that right, that 7.2 is the resolution that adopts the form of the ordinance.
And we'll wait till that one to put this in.
And then the 7.3 is the ordinance that adopts the, basically, what's in the resolution.
Right, right.
So the revised language should go in the 7.2.
Great. Thank you.
And Steve will explain the change here in a little bit more detail for you.
Okay, good. Well, I'm going, since there's nobody in the...
I'll explain it to you. I'm sorry. Just by way of explanation, we had found that there were two standards that were required for restaurant, bars, and cocktail lounges that we had not included in the microbrewery and brew pub classifications. And so what we're proposing to you tonight is to make them consistent, so that they're treated the same, that we take those two standards that we apply to restaurants, bars, and cocktail lounges in the definition, and we apply it to the microbrewery and the brew pub. And so the language that we've given you is very specific with respect to how the ordinance was drafted. You can't really tell what's happening when you read that, because it's all subsections and subparagraphs. But the intent is basically to take those two provisions, which Steve has kindly put up here, and it's the, under the special use categories, we had the bars, cocktail lounges, and brew pubs, microbreweries, all subject to the two standards regarding live music within 100, 300 feet, and then the entertainment area exceeding 5,000 square feet. But we had two more, the area devoted to patron dancing exceeding 25 percent, and then open after hours is defined by state law, which generally means after, that dancing continues after the sale of liquor is concluded. And what we basically are doing, are taking the, these two standards here, and including them in the one above, so that it applies to all four categories instead of just the two. And then the rest of it is just go, it ripples through the ordinance to make it in all the appropriate locations. So.
Great.
I know it's clear as mud, but if there's any questions, we'll try to help clarify it. It's a change that we feel promotes a greater consistency between those types of uses and wouldn't affect, really, the establishment of microbreweries or brew pubs. It's just one of those things that we want it to be consistent, so we don't have a bar restricted to doing one thing in a, in a microbrewery next to it that is treated differently.
Great.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public meeting, and I would like the clerk to read 7.2. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 13-1584 by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1584, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled Exhibit A Amendment to City of Goodyear Zoning Ordinance Relating to Brewery, Brew Pub, and Microbrewery.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Well...
Mayor?
Councilman Campbell?
I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know really what I'm voting on, if I'm doing this one or the other one.
Wait, that's what I clarified earlier.
That's what I'm so confused.
So I'll clarify it again. This first one is, we're not going to put this in, because what this is, is the ordinance, to correct the ordinance. So in the first one, it is as we stated. Is that correct? Mr. Schmitz?
Madam Mayor, yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
You just passed a resolution approving it as a public record. It's a technical...
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I assumed it is. So what, so...
My questions are then, based on what was presented to us with the definitions and with meshing everything together, is the language that we are now going to adopt similar to what other cities who have microbreweries have? And what I'm trying not to do is for us to be so restrictive, we aren't going to attract them. And since this is all new language for us, I would like to have you tell me that, how you are doing this, please.
You want that reassert, reassurance?
Yes, please, uh-huh, because this is new language.
Yes. Could you address that, please?
Mayor, council, that's a good question. Back to the beginning, we don't allow these uses at all.
Right.
So this is intended to bring them, to allow them an atmosphere where they can operate in Goodyear. And in looking at other cities throughout the valley and Flagstaff and Tucson, there's kind of a mix. Some cities do floor area, they, like we did, they limit it, where they do require a special use permit. We tried to craft it kind of down the middle to where we would, could bring them in, but still look at our residential areas and try to keep maybe incompatible uses away. That's why the special use permit, we thought was a good idea, because it keeps the door open, but allows council to evaluate each one. And with the special use permit, we'll be looking at, to see if it's appropriate, traffic, noise study, public safety plan, floor plans, to see where is entertainment going, where is parking. So we feel like we have now, the tools now to evaluate them, that we're proposing a 300-foot separation, you know, a football field away, that we can encourage them now to come in, and we're happy that we do have one that is interested in opening in Goodyear. So that is a good sign, that this is going in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Just two questions for clarification. The change of the, the 500 feet to 300 feet, so you just gave me a little picture by saying a football field. I was just thinking back to the days of issue with Buffalo Wild Wings and the proximity to the neighborhoods. What is, what is that? Can you think about, give me an idea what that footage is between the neighborhood? I know you tried to show some on the map, and I was just trying to think where we actually had an issue of noise with the neighborhoods and was trying to think what the different, the distance was between Buffalo Wild Wings and that neighborhood.
Mayor, Council, McDowell Road is probably...
Just across the street.
An arterial, it's probably about 110 feet of rideaway.
Which is probably less than three, then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, good. The other question that, one that I don't know, and might be addressed in here, but when we talk about the entertainment, and back to that 300 feet, you know, I said, hey, why can't we have two, you know, different bands going on at the same time? You know, I don't have a problem with that. But is there a statement in there that this is indoor entertainment and not that they would have a patio outdoor and the music would be outdoors with 300 feet next to neighborhood? Then I, you know, I, I would, would think that special use permit would really need to be looked at.
Mayor, Council, the special use permit regulations do state indoor.
Indoor, okay.
Even if it's an accessory use by right, it still has to be...
Still indoor. Okay. Thank you. That was all.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 6-0.
All right. We're going to go down to the next 7.2. And will the city clerk please read ordinance 13-1289 by title only?
Adopt ordinance 13-1289 amending various articles and sections of the zoning ordinance to create definitions for brewery, brew pub, and microbrewery, and establish various review and approval processes related to these proposed uses of land, providing for corrections, suburbability, and an effective date, and including the following revisions. Combine subsections 4-1-3A, H, and I. Renumber subparagraphs J and K of subsection 4-1-3A to subparagraphs I and J. Add paragraph, subparagraphs I, 1, and 2 of subsection 4-1-3A1 to subsection 4-1-3A2. And sub, add, add subparagraphs 3 and 4 to subsection 4-2-15A as subparagraphs 3 and 4, and to subsection 4-2-16A as subparagraphs 5 and 6.
Thank you very much. That's a great reading job on that. Could I have a motion and a second, please? So move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne and a second from Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the 6-0.
Great. Before I go on to the other one, it's really great. I think we answered some of those requests. They want the entertainment. I know we have a long way to go to fill that slot, but this is a beginning, and so I know we're all excited about it. All right, let's go down to 7.3, the public hearing. And I'm just going to inform you on this because some of you have this agenda. The public hearing, which was scheduled tonight to consider a use permit to allow outdoor display and storage of merchandise for sale at the proposed Cal Ranch Stores facility, has been postponed until December 9, 2013. So once again, Cal Ranch has been postponed till December 9, 2013. All right, let's go down to 7.6. To consider the preliminary plat for Pebble Creek Phase 2 Unit 43B subdividing 25.23 acres into 124 lots and 12 tracts generally located at the southwest corner of Indian School Road and Cervel Avenue within Pebble Creek Phase 2, planned area development, subject to stipulation. Steve, you're up again.
Mayor, Council, what we have tonight is Unit 43B. It is a parcel of land within the Pebble Creek Phase 2 development. It's about 25 acres. Surrounding it to the east and south are existing and proposed development within Pebble Creek. To the west is the existing golf course maintenance yard, and to the north is a commercial area within Palm Valley. Within the PAD, the property is designated as medium-density residential, and that allows development between two and five units to the acre. With this preliminary plat, they are proposing 124 lots and 12 tracts at a density of 4.9 units per acre. The typical lot is 45 feet wide by 86 feet deep, and it's proposed for an attached, single-family product. This lot size and the attached product are designated as the Villa Home Series in the And with this design, it, product consists of two homes sharing a wall along a common lot line. And the yellow line shows basically the middle of the two units. That'll be the shared wall and the shared, uh, common property line. Between the two units will be the standard setbacks within Pebble Creek, the five-foot side setbacks, so you will have 10 feet between the two-unit buildings. Almost seven acres of open space is proposed within this development. The HOA will maintain all the common areas. The HOA will also, with this product, maintain all areas outside the home, all the exterior landscaping and exterior of the home. Residents will have access to amenities within this parcel as well as also the amenities within the wider Pebble Creek development. We did find the proposal is consistent...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that about that. They'll have amenities where, within this as well as the main?
Well, Mayor, with this development, they'll have approximately seven acres of open space, and if they have trails and such in there...
Thank you.
Residents will have that as well as everything else. We did look at this proposal. We do find it consistent with the development type. The lot size is permitted by the PAD for this parcel. We do find it consistent with our subdivision regulations. We are recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the report. That concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? Okay. Could I please have a motion and a second? So move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Councilman Campbell?
I'm very excited about the villas because I've seen what Mr. Robson built at Casa Grande, and they sold out very quickly. And these are going to be homes that will allow residents to lock up and walk away, and the HOA will be taking care of all the outside grounds and the outside part of the building. And it's for those folks that don't want to take care of a yard or have to do any of the ma, the maintenance of it. And we're very excited to see this area built, number one, but number two, the type of homes he's going to put in there.
I'd just like to add to it, absolutely, this is marvelous because our residents have been looking for this for a long time because many of them that do no longer want to stay in a larger home, this gives them another option without having to move out of Pebble Creek. So the only, the only statement I'm going to make, and I'm not asking for an answer right now, the only question I've heard from a number of people about the number of people coming into the community, that they, the expectation of the, you know, this is more dense, and are we going to have enough space with all our recreational facilities for the number of, of people? And of course, we already know, I think I was at an event this week, and I think they got 150 names already on a reserve list that want one of these homes or be able to look at it. So you can see how quickly these are going to go. So anyway, that's my only comment on that. All right. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. All right. Next item is to receive the final fiscal year 2013 fourth quarter and fiscal year 2014 first quarter financial updates and approve the corresponding budget transfers. Terry Canada, Budget Research Manager, to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to briefly talk about fiscal year 13. Seems like it's been over for a while. Give you an update on the year-end expenditures and revenues for that, and then move into the regular quarterly report for first quarter for 14. And with that, I'll also answer any budget, any questions you may have on the budget transfers for both quarters, and then you'll be approving those tonight. We will be reviewing these by fund, again, all operating funds. I'll talk about the general fund, and then move into the other operating funds, as you can see here, and then finally talk about the quarterly transfers. So with that, how'd we end up last year? Just want to point out that these are unaudited numbers. We're going through, I think we're pretty much wrapped up on the audit now. I will pass on the note that it went very well this year, the audit did, for fiscal year 13. I think I overheard someone say it was the best one we've had in a number of years, so kudos to the finance staff there. As you can see, revenues overall came in at about 111%. This isn't a surprise. We've been updating you every quarter, and they've been coming in strong all year long. As far as non-construction sales tax revenues, I have some highlights of the things that came in over budget. We did have about, I think it was almost 2.5 million in development-related revenues. Again, no surprise there, it's, continues to be strong with the market. And then, that also influences the construction sales taxes. You can see it was over 2. Some other areas that were strong, we had some, the royalties and the rents on the marquee signs. We also had charges for services, newly established Litfield Park Agreement, I think maybe it's a, the second year of that. We also had a reimbursement from the CFDs where we kind of changed some accounting things. It was about 400 and some thousand where they're, we're now paying for the landscape services, and they're reimbursing us for that. We're also really strong in a number of other areas. Police and fire have some development agreements that someone is paying, I think it's Sadea, is that who it is called, is paying some operating costs for us. And again, with the development being strong, that operating reimbursement coming from them was up. We also had good reimbursement from Arizona State Land for some firework that we've done. Southwest ambulance contract was higher, too. And then we got back some money involving all bankruptcy that had to do with our investments, and that was a couple hundred thousand dollars. So overall, there were a number of things that came in stronger, and development activity drove a lot of that. Construction sales tax, again, up 141%. Moving to the expenditures, we were under, average was about 93%. Again, we tend to spend more in the second half of the year. You can see that fourth quarter is higher than most of the other ones. The other thing I wanted to note here is we've been talking a lot about kind of balancing this out and the trending of expenditures as they go. When we get to first quarter, you'll see that that runs a little bit low. And so I just want to point out, this is kind of consistent, year after year. We're going to be low first quarter and then pick up the spending as we go. We don't want to under-budget and overspend. So it's kind of important to know that although it seems, actually, it's good news at 93%, it's not, it's not as if we're out of alignment. We end, we try to estimate being under about 5% again because we don't want to under-budget and overspend. Moving ahead to the other funds, you can see they all came in pretty good. HERF was just a little bit under 2% there. On the other side, the expenditures received, they were also under there. Water at 106, wastewater sanitation, and stadium was up 12% over. And again, on the expenditure side, you'll see some activity related to that. Here we go, on the expenditure side for HERF, getting a little bit under, water, wastewater, sanitation, all had small, small percent savings. And then stadium was over budget a little bit. I just refer you back to the revenues. They did have higher-than-budget revenues that would help offset this expense. The expense, the overage, I think it was mainly due to the utilities. We're running some high costs there with water and electrical. Hopefully, we're doing a remediated water line this year that you'll see the savings in probably next fiscal year that hopefully bring that cost down for the utilities. Any questions on last fiscal year or how we ended up before I move to the next one?
Yes, Joe, head. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
On the, on the stadium, the transfer of the public safety costs for last fiscal year, is that showing up in this cost?
Yes, it is. In fact, you'll see it in the fourth quarter budget transfers. The cost for both police and fire, we transfer both the expense and the budgets to that stadium, and it is here in the total.
Okay. Is that part of the budget at the beginning of the year? You got a rough estimate so that it's actually within the stadium budget? Or is it one of those things that's going to overrun?
Can we wait until the, we get the motion here and, and...
Well, she was asking if any question.
Okay. I know she's asking that, but I'm, I, this is kicking.
Okay.
So let's hold that, for that, okay? You know, I thought maybe it was a slide or something. All right. I appreciate that. So are you finished with this presentation?
This is the last quarter of fiscal year 13. I'll move on to first quarter of 14.
Okay, so maybe, go ahead, Joe.
To answer the question, we do, we budget for the public safety expenses within their budgets at the beginning of the year, then just the actual cost in the matching budgets are transferred over. So we wait until the expenses incurred during spring training in March, and then in April, you'll see that transfer.
Okay. So that, does that then impact the public safety budget, actually bring down their expenses because you're moving money from that over to stadium?
It, it, it's an equal transfer of both the budget comes out matching the expenditure, the actual expenditure. So if they spent $20,000 in overtime, we would move that expense from public safety and the budget.
So I guess my question is, is when we see the public safety overtime for fiscal year 13 at the end, then that should be their overtime excluding the stadium because that's been transferred out. Am I, am I following correctly?
Correct. That is correct.
And, and do you know off the top of your mind, head, what, what that amount is?
The total amount for the transfer for both fire and police, and there's a number of divisions, and so I'm just...
That's fine, just the total.
The total is $135,000 approximately.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions on 2013. Should I ask them now, or do I need to wait?
I don't know. I'm going to refer to the lawyer because now they're asking, I was going to have them wait until the motion and, and ask the questions and not the speaker cards. I think it's getting a little bit...
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, you have questions after the motion.
Yes, so, thank you.
All right.
So I, okay, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Okay. Moving ahead to fiscal year 14. Again, we are, first quarter will be through September. Revenues, again, we're seeing coming in strong, pretty consistent in the development services area. Again, construction sales tax remains up. On the expenditure side, you can expect to see it about a quarter of the year, again, about 25%. It runs a little bit low. Through this, when I was updating the slides from year over year, the percentages within the departments and the percentages within the funds, it really didn't change. So we're pretty much on track... So we're pretty much on track to spend the same as we have the last couple of years as far as percentages go. Just some highlights of the top, the top revenues here. Little note on the property tax, that percentage is a little bit skewed, because we only collect property tax twice a year. There actually was a prior-year payment that hit. So it's bringing that percentage up, because this is a weighted average for the percentages of revenue. Urban revenue sharing a little bit under, auto lieu over, state shared right on, and then again, development services is running pretty strong. And we continue to monitor these every, every month. We check with development services and see what, you know, how many permits we got, and we're just trying to stay out in front of that in case we have to make some adjustments. On the expenditure side, as you would expect, salaries are running at about 20%. Point out again that that runs about 70% of the total general fund budget. Contractual services, commodities are a little bit high this year, which is good. I think we're getting some things going through purchasing maybe a little bit quicker there. They represent about 3% of the budget. And then the other thing you'll notice this year, this is new. We have a number of one-time operating supplementals, if you will, that we, that you approved in the budget. And so we broke that out, and we're 10, we're starting to monitor that trending of the expense there. And that would be things such as equipment, some larger capital one-time items. Again, overall, 19%. As always, we're going to stay on top of the revenues, monitor those closely, see what we're going to be going into at half-year here in December. Adjust any estimates as necessary, and then come before you mid-year with, you know, in preparation for next year's budget. On the expense side, the other thing I'll add is we have done, I think we're almost done with all the quarterly reviews with the departments, and we have minimal activity on these supplements. You can see the percentage is very, very small. I will have included in the report for next quarter, a detailed status report on all the supplementals. You had requested that, and there just wasn't enough activity this time to warrant it, so we'll make sure it's included in the second quarter report. Revenues for the other funds, you can see they're coming in strong. They're doing good. No surprises here. Expenditures are a little bit low. I'll point out on HERF, the bulk of that, I think it's about 2, 2 and 1/4 million is for that street overlay project. You'll probably see that expense hit later in the year in the spring. That'll really swing the percentage around. Same thing with wastewater, has a number of those maintenance item supplementals, and as they go through procurement and start to contract that stuff, you'll see that percentage come up, too. Stadium, again, most of the activity there is in the spring with the spring training. And with that, I wanted to remind you again, we do the budget transfers, and these would be between funds, departments, and capital projects. Just want to highlight a couple for fourth quarter. We had a few of these that you've already approved, the actual, the actual activity. One would be the 911. We had the radio project, the RWC. We kind of blended those two projects together as that vertical construction went on, and so there was a $600,000 transfer for that project, moving it from one to the other to incorporate it. There is $250,000 project adjustment for the fleet services building, which Regis will talk about here in a little bit, but you did approve that with the contract discussions back in March, I think it was. We also have the Sonoran Valley EIS study. The, you could see how strong the community development revenue is. Some of that excess revenue went into fund that, that study. And then there were a number of insurance proceeds. And what happens at the end of the year, some of the operating budgets run tight, and so when we have vandals, or we have, I think maybe perhaps it was storm damage, we get reimbursement from the insurance company. So we go ahead and adjust the budgets to accommodate those expenses, so that the departments don't have to run over for things that are, you know, not due to, not in their control. First quarter budget transfers, the big one here, I always have to kind of stop for a minute, is the capital improvement. It's the carryover from the year before. So when we put together the 14 budget, we had an estimate of how much we were going to spend in 13. And then this million-dollar, $1,003,952 transfer is to reconcile those budgets with what we actually spent last year. We're moving some project budgets up and some down, just depending on where they ended up at year-end. I also see a number of grant transfers in here, and as the grants come in throughout the year, we're going to go ahead and add the appropriation in there for the exact grant amounts that are awarded. And then, like I had mentioned before, the one about the CFD, we're doing the landscaping. We're contracting with the city, and then we're getting reimbursed for that. So it was another $475,000 one for that expense. I would be happy to answer questions now or after the motion.
And let's wait till after. So you're finished now?
I am.
All right. Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Could I please have a motion to approve the fiscal year 13 fourth quarter and fiscal year 14 first quarter budget transfers? I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Laura Tano, and a second from Councilwoman Osborne. Open for council discussion. I can't want to fight. Open for council discussion. Any council discussion?
I have questions.
Vice Mayor Fazillo?
No.
You'll let me go first?
Let her join.
Okay.
All right. Ladies first.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, you.
Councilwoman Osborne.
Thank you. You hit on a couple of the questions on the stadium. I am curious, the increase in revenue, was that just a combo of events and ticket sales, or was more, more heavy in ticket sales? Do you, do you have record of that, or is that a Nathan question?
No, we, we talked closely with Nathan, and the increase in the stadium revenues is mainly due to non-spring training events. So we are, we are increasing the events out there.
All righty. And then on, I noticed that on page, I don't know, it's within the book, the revenue sources, and this was on the 2013, and, you know, I don't know exactly what this is, but it really stood out, a 1,800% increase on other, in enterprise wastewater. And it was annual budget of 13,000 and ended up actual of 113,000. So I was, I was kind of curious, is, that's a big difference. Was that just a change of a category is why that's showing so high in this regard?
Yes, correct. And that was the, that was the prior-year 12. It just happens to be for comparative analysis. But the, yeah, the budget was just other reimbursements that we get, which would usually be damage reimbursements, and then something posted in there that wasn't expected in the budget. So it's not like it was a reoccurring revenue that we're going to get all the time. It was just an anomaly.
Anomaly. That's what I thought. Okay. Then, let's see. Now, you mentioned about, I noticed the insurance payments for vandalism. Okay. So explain that one again, because when I first saw it, I thought, oh, are we having a lot of vandalism at our parks? What's, what, because I know that there's two different transfers in here regarding that. So can you explain that one again?
There, I can't explain on the increase of the, on the claims. What I can explain is we've handled the reimbursement a little bit different. At the end of the year, the departments were on tight in their budgets, which is a good thing. It means that they're at appropriate level. And so some of these unplanned unforeseen expenses would cause them to go over budget. And so when they have to, if Nathan has to put up wind screens at the park because of a storm, or we have to replace a pump somewhere because of the vandals, they don't necessarily have that appropriation within their budget to do that. They have their planned predictable maintenance that they would budget for each year, but these other events that happen, we add appropriation into their budget. We also get corresponding reimbursement from the insurance companies for these.
Okay. Okay. My last, I think my last question, in non-departmental, the community funding, is there a, is this based on a percent of what revenues are, is where we come up with the figure for community funding? Or has that been just a stated figure year after year after year? How, where do we come up with that figure?
Interestingly enough, when we went into recession, that, that amount, I believe it's 100, I want to say 151,000, something like that, it just remained the same. We haven't adjusted it. We didn't really have a lot of discussion on it. There is a policy within the budget policies that states how that can be or cannot be increased.
So it's not by percent? It's just by, just a figure, more or less?
There is a figure, but in, within that policy, it addresses the percent change that you could do.
Okay. The change. All right. That was all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fazillo?
The overall general fund transfer to the ballpark was, first, was that in, within budget overall? And what was that amount? Do you know?
Councilwoman Fazillo, I, the, the operating subsidy remains right around 2.1 million dollars. It is within the budget as adopted.
Okay.
And they were within, because the revenues were over what we had planned, they were within that subsidy.
Okay. Second, second question, on the 16%, it looks like first quarter, general fund operating revenues up. As I recall in the strategic plan, I think our looking for the next fiscal year was, was not quite as optimistic. That 16% just seems to be, I guess, a surprise as far as a jump for me for the first quarter that I see there for the revenues. And I assume when it has revenues there, you're comparing operating, because you have broken out the construction sales tax. What's made up that, I know some of it's development services, but that's a significant increase in the first quarter.
That is correct. Regular sales tax remains stable. It's up a little bit. The other thing that is driving the general fund revenues would be development services with, is within that. And so that would be permitting, building safety, related activity plan review, things like that. And the permits remain strong in the first quarter. We're, again, keeping our eye on that moving into second quarter, but that was part of the non-construction sales tax.
Okay. I was surprised with the number, because 16 is, is a large number, especially in this economy. Second question on the, follow-up on Councilmember Osborne on the wastewater, the 124% or 24% increase in the first quarter, what is driving that increase?
The increase in the wastewater, you know, the estimate for 14 is probably too low. It's probably too conservative. It came in stronger last year. Again, part of that increase, both for water, wastewater, and sanitation, is due to the permit growth just remaining stronger. It was higher than we had estimated. The wastewater budget for this year is probably, I'll probably have to increase that. It's probably just too low right now. So it's, it's the estimate that's low. It's not necessarily that they're coming in that far over what we, what we know now.
So I would, I would suspect the good news is, once we get into the rate analysis, that hopefully, you know, if it keeps growing at that, maybe that will have a positive impact on any future. I'm looking at seeing Larry shake his head. So that's, that's good news when I see that part, at least on the wastewater side. On the expenditures, you know, I know it's always lower on the first quarter, because we tend to pick up some of the contractual, you know, later. Is there a possibility, based on historicals, that we can get a closer estimate on that as a percentage of what's typically? I know it fluctuates a little bit on construction, on contracting and some of the others, but if we can get a better idea historically, what percentage, it's not an even 1/12, you know, all the way through, maybe on the expenses, we get a better feel for where we're running, you know, on a quarterly basis. Does that, does that make some?
Well, I went back three years, and I had looked. When I was, when I was updating this and posting the numbers, we averaged right around 19% we have for the last three years.
Okay.
In your financial report, you're going to see the one report by department, and as I went through and updated those, those percentages did not change much from year over year from last year's report. So we're averaging right around 19%. A couple of the departments that were lower come to mind would be the attorney. We had some carryover that was adjusted there for outside litigation. And then non-departmental. And again, as the year goes on, you would expect to see some of those larger expenditures hit.
Okay. Again, the two surprises was a 16% on the general fund operating. To me, that's a pleasant surprise.
It's a nice surprise.
Hopefully, it will continue, you know, in that direction. And the fact that maybe wastewater, when it does the rate, that 24% will have a positive impact on that as we go forward as well. So, thank you.
Any other? Well, I just want to compliment you. I can remember the number of council meetings when everybody questioned the transfers and what they were. And that was always the burning question, is that there's a number there, we have no idea what you're transferring. And the way that you set it up this time was great. It was explanatory. We, we understood it, and we knew what it was. Didn't that help? It really did. And so that's a big change, so I want to thank you for that. Anything else? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Let's go on to 7.85122, to consider authorizing the city manager, city manager to approve GMP contract for the construction manager at risk construction contract not to exceed the guaranteed maximum price amount of $2,550,000 for construction of the fleet and equipment management facility at the Goodyear Operations Center, and authorize a purchase order to be issued. Regis Reed to present.
Mayor, members of council, once again, it's a pleasure to be here before you this evening to provide you with an update on our fleet equipment management facility, and to seek approval to move this project into the construction phase. First, I'd like to just briefly give you a location. It hasn't really changed at all from when we first brought this project to you 10 months ago. It is located in our city operations center, which is just south of MC 85, which is right along here, and just west of Estrella Parkway, which is right along here. The facility is located just north of the current wash and fuel facility, which is being constructed at this time, which is in this location. This is the new fleet facility. We will be utilizing existing and being installed infrastructure for this project as designed, and the projects will overlap about five months. This overlap affords us an opportunity of economy of scale to where we can reduce the cost of the project by eliminating many of the major subcontractors mobilization, demobilization that they have to do in the project. It also assists us in keeping the GCs down for the general contractor, the CM at risk contractor, utilizing the same staff and the same construction trailers while these projects are going on simultaneously. Construction schedule for the project is scheduled to be completed in May of 2014. A little bit on the site layout. This project is designed, is complete, and running through the city process right now for permitting. The, the site has 10 large vehicle staging areas for, for service coming into the facility, and 10 large vehicle ready line services for staff to pick the vehicles up once they've been serviced. It offers 18 ready, or service line vehicles for small vehicles along here and here, and once again, provides staff-ready vehicles here and in this location over here for staff to pick it up when the vehicles are ready. The, the circulation around this complex is designed as such to allow large vehicles to circulate around safely and not cause any conflicts with any of the staff vehicles being stored. It also provides for 13 employee parking right here, just to the east of the facility. The floor plan is approximately 14,000 square feet. 8,500 of it makes up the actual service bay area, which is this, this facility area right here. We have got six small vehicle bays right here, 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 and just south of that right here. It also affords two large vehicle bays for the large vehicles to pull through here and here. There is a outside service bay area, which will allow us to prep vehicles that need to be steam cleaned or washed off prior to entering for service, and the other functions as welding, things like that can be done outside of the facility. It also has a staff area, which is this section of the building here, which houses a men's and women's restroom facility with showers, two managers' offices, a lobby space with file storage, a staff work area, training area, and break area, a large parts and tool area right in here, and of course, all of the supporting structures is utility rooms, electrical rooms, IT rooms, things like that. The building is currently designed to be expanded upon very, very easily and cleanly. What essentially will happen as the building grow, as we, our needs grow, and we have to add to it, all of these bays on the east side of the building here will be easily converted to large bay, large vehicle bays. They're being built as such with the larger doors vehicles can pass through, which ultimately would allow us to expand to the west and put all of our light-duty bays to the west. Just to give you a little budget summary here, in FY 12 and 13, $250,000 was approved for the design of the project. And in 2013, 14, this year, $2,729,500 was approved to be added to the project for the construction and finalization of it. Currently, we've encumbered $218,000 for design, and design is complete with the exception of the construction administration portion of it by the designer. We've encumbered a pre- We've encumbered pre-construction services of DL Withers to assist us in the development of budgets and estimates and also help us through keeping the project within our budget limits. And as a result of that, pre-construction services, they delivered the GMP to us, which we're here before you this evening for approval. Our construction budget is $2,550,000, which we are within, within this construction. And that does leave us with a $68,000 construction contingency for the contractor. We anticipate data cabling of being $20,000. The IT needs for the structure, for the building to be $55,000. FF need the furniture for the building to be $50,000. And we have a contingency left for $34,000, which brings us to our budgeted amount. We're here this evening to ask for approval for the GMP construction contract with DL Withers for the construction of fleet and management facility in amount not to exceed $2,539,000. $2,539,217. And with that, I conclude my presentation for the evening.
Thank you, Regis. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion in a second?
Second.
I heard Councilman Osborne make a motion, a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we'll go back on this because it sounded like the same voice. The motion was made by Councilman Campbell. And Vice Mayor Pizzillo was a second to clarify the records. Thank you. Open for council discussion. Discussion, Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just more for, for a comment, just for the general public that's watching. Can you describe the process that led to the award of the actual contract itself?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
The overall process of what led to the award itself for the construction?
Right. We actually, on this project, our design team was selected from our design services on-call list. It fell within the parameters of that. So we selected Rynston Watkins for the design of it. The contractor was selected through a request for ultimate procurement. Seems as we identified before, we have about a five-month overlap with construction of the project. We presented that to our procurement department and they agreed that because of the adjacencies of two different contractors possibly playing in the same dirt or working right alongside and sometimes in the same areas with each other, it would be best for the project to move forward and have DL Withers just perform the construction of the project also at that time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor. It's a good point. Any other comment? Yes, Councilman Osborne.
Just for memory's sake, what's the square footage of this again?
It's approximately 14,000 square feet, just under.
14,000 square feet and this is accommodating for the future, correct?
This, this, it, it has, it is built out to last us till 2020, we anticipate, with the growth of vehicles. It is designed to be able to be expanded upon very, very easily. As I identified, actually, the vehicle bays we're building right now accommodate the large vehicles. So all of those bays will be total of five large vehicle bays rather than just the two. And then we build the smaller vehicle bays to the east is, is the plan at this time.
And part of that reason was because we could use the fees right now. Is that correct? Due to, is it 1525? I always forget what the bill.
Mayor, yes, that is correct. The, the impact fees we have currently need to be used up.
And we have to use those impact fees by a certain time. So in order to get, I'll give you the old expression, the bang, you know, buck for the bang, bang for the buck. Well, did this, so, great. And I have to tell you, this is one facility that was, is really needed by our employees. And bless them for having to work in the conditions they've worked for a period of time they've done. I think we've all been there and, I mean, I just can't imagine working in the summer under those conditions. So I'm very pleased to say this is happening. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right. The next item is to consider authorizing the finance director to request Wells Fargo Bank and a resign as the trustee and paying agent for the city and the community facilities district. Larry Lang, finance director to present. Larry?
Thank you, mayor. Tonight's item is, is asking you to authorize me to ask for the resignation of Wells Fargo as our paying agent and trustee. Thought I'd probably start with a little bit of what is a paying agent and trustee. It's not something we deal with very frequently, obviously. A paying agent is when we sell bonds and people buy the bonds, how does the cash get to the bondholders? We pay the paying agent and the paying agent pays then the bondholders at that point in time. The world has changed a lot in my career on that. The bonds used to be bearer bonds in the good old days and you'd have the coupon clippers. And now everything is automated in there, which makes it a little easier. Also, at times, they, they ensure compliance with it. In other words, is the money where it should be at the right time? If there are reserve funds, they might keep those reserve funds to make sure that they're there. And the, the timing of this is that there are, we normally hire a paying agent or a trustee at the time we issue the bonds and they stay in that position for the life of the bonds, which 25, 30, sometimes even 40 years out. A vast majority of our services have been provided historically by Wells Fargo. And in fact, within our CFDs, 99.5% of our CFDs, $79,000 a year worth of fees are to Wells Fargo. And within the city, $17,000 total fees, $15,000 of those are going to Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo, a couple of years ago, moved out of the state of Arizona and providing these services. They do not have local representation on these services, nor do they provide these services locally. They're currently provided in Los Angeles. What we'd like to do is to ask them to resign and have these services provided by trustees who actually are in the state of Arizona. The second thing we want to accomplish out of this is to maybe get a little less concentration with one vendor doing all of our work, but maybe split it around the others. At this point in time, I believe there are four vendors that have an Arizona presence. Some, a stronger presence than others in that. And what we would do is move forward then with, with a selection process. I would probably do it in a fashion where we are dividing the work that this company gets, this particular bond issue and the next one gets the others, but divided amongst the community facilities district that one paying agent would have all of that particular community facilities district. Will this save us money? It's possible, but I, I'm not expecting a huge dollar savings. What I've seen is that they tend to be pretty close in what they charge for the services. But it would, I think, get us a better service at the end of the day. If there are any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, with that, could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Laura Tannen and a second by Councilman Holman, open for council discussion. Yes, Councilman Campbell.
Larry, are you planning to, I don't want to use the word solicit, but I don't know what word to use. Ask maybe other financial institutions to be the trustee? I mean, banks? Is that what you're looking for? It's just local banks or?
There are actually, that I'm aware of, that provide this service in Arizona. There are four entities. Bank of New, Bank of New York Mellon is one. Bankers Trust, which is more a trust, I'm not sure their corporate structure is a second. US Bank and Zion's Bank are both banks also that provide these services in Arizona.
And they have offices here.
Right. And we will be issuing an RFP or an RFQ so that if there are others that we're not aware of, that they will have the opportunity. But they need to be in the business, of course. We don't want to be the first one for any of them.
Any of them in Goodyear?
It's a good point.
No, none of these would have their operations in Goodyear. These operations tend to be in the downtown Phoenix area.
Any other questions? Thank you, Larry. Now the discussion is finished. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
So let's go on to the next agenda item. We want 7.10. We will now consider approving a settlement of condemnation action filed by the flood control district of Maricopa County against the city of Goodyear. Roy Massey, city attorney, to present.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think the city manager, city clerk often get together and rank items on the agenda by what is most interesting to the public. I'm a little concerned that I came in after appointing a new trustee. But I'd like to think we're finishing strong.
Well, anytime you hear against the city of Goodyear, I think that might keep him on hand to listen.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a condemnation matter and it's a proposed settlement. What's a little bit different about this is that we are actually the party who's having our land condemned as opposed to sometimes, and not often, that we actually condemn property for public projects. This matter was brought against the city by the Maricopa County Flood Control District so they can construct a drainage channel for the future State Route 303. The flood control district approached the city back in 2010 seeking to condemn approximately nine acres of our property in the, in the vicinity of the El Cidro development that we purchased back in 2007, as you may recall. At that time, given the current market valuations, they offered us $58,000 for the nine acres. We politely declined their offer and negotiated over appraisals for about the next year. Could not reach an agreement on what the appropriate valuation was for the property. In 2011, the Maricopa County Flood Control District filed a lawsuit against the city seeking to condemn the nine acres. I have previously met with the council prior to a settlement conference that we had in, on, in November 5th of this year. For the public, I'll give a little bit of background information. You did give me direction on, on a range of settlement value. The settlement percentage this evening is within that range, actually on the upper, upper end of that range. And I'm going to try to use the elbow. It's two, two pieces of property. Like I said, back in 2007, we condemned, we purchased 80 acres from BET Investments. And there's two pieces. There's the north piece that we call, that we call the north piece. It's a cotton and lower Buckeye. That's this area. The green is what the flood control district is actually condemning from us. It's about 2.39 acres. It's going to leave a remainder parcels for the city, but we're going to be split by this drainage channel. These are not the scale. I'm not an engineer.
Yes, that's okay.
This is the southern piece. And actually, while it, the condemned property actually looks smaller than the first diagram, it's actually 7.25 acres. It's just spread out over a larger section of land. As I previously referenced, their initial offer on this is $58,000. The, at the time that we've, the lawsuit was filed against the city, we'd received an appraisal for approximately $728,000. The flood control district, after reevaluating the land repeatedly, had a valuation of about $482,000. So at that time, we're about $300,000 apart. The valuation is set at the time they filed the lawsuit, so that would have been in October of 2011. So obviously, from that time to this time, property values have been, continued to increase. But under the law, the value is what it was at the time the lawsuit was filed. We continued to work with our appraisers to refine our appraisal of the land. Our final appraisal was $865,000. That had to do a little bit with the calculation of severance damages, which is the primary issue at, at stake in this case. Eyes of a jury would start to glaze over if you start arguing about severance damages. But really what that is, is, is not the value of the land itself. It's what does a condemnation do to the adjacent land and what's the reduction in value to that land? So really, the remaining, the valuations between our two appraisers were pretty close by the time we got ready for litigation. What we're really arguing about was the reduction in property values on our remaining land values. So that's really what the differences were between the two parties. And frankly, the channelization is, is a good public works project that everybody's in favor of. So it's really, this lawsuit is about the city getting fair value for our land. We went to the mediation hearing. Finally, we got to a proposed settlement that we're presenting to this evening. The land valuation is calculated at $689,000 with accrued interest on the land, on the land of additionally about $40,000. So to settle this case, Maricopa County Flood Control District will pay us approximately $729,000 based upon the point in which we actually signed the papers. So it's going to fluctuate a few dollars one way or the other on that valuation. We're working on a license to allow them to get onto our property to start constructing the project. And there will be a relocation of a sewer line that's currently located within the condemned property as well. Those are the general terms of the settlement agreement. You have a resolution this evening that is authorizing us to enter into the form of judgment that's attached to your package and author, or ratifying the settlement memorandum that I signed back on November, November 5th under the terms that I just presented to you. So I, with that, I'll answer any questions. Just want to recognize Linda Beals. She really worked the appraisals on this property, on this project. We started $58,000. We're up to $729,000. A lot of that credit goes to Linda and her expertise in appraisals.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak? No one here from the county, I guess, huh?
No, it's going to their board in pretty short order as well.
Okay. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 13-1585 by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1585 approving and authorizing the settlement of the condemnation action filed by the flood control district of Maricopa County against the city of Goodyear in Maricopa County Superior Court, KCV 2011-056245, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and settlement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Laura Tannen, a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just a comment. Again, I appreciate all the effort. This is not the first time we've heard this. But I appreciate going from 56 to the final number there from staff. And again, thank you.
Thank you. I also recognize Sarah Chilton in my office did a lot of work on this as well.
Well, I remember when Linda Beals came on and of course, knew and you always wondered about the appraisals. And I can remember people questioning some of them. But I have to tell you, when you read this through, congratulations, Linda Beals. Thank you. Because we could have ended up with much less than this. So she, yes, all right. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I didn't see that question. I wouldn't have spoken. Councilman Campbell?
I just have a question. With the county now going to, or the flood district going to put a, whatever they're going to put in the middle of our land, is our land even usable for anything?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you recall, this land was purchased for a future right-of-way for the State Route 303. So the valuation is certainly contemplated at the highest and best use, which is generally commercial. But really, the expectation is eventually this is going to be a state highway. So it'll still be used for that purpose eventually.
But we shouldn't incur any costs, any additional costs or anything because of what's left?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, that was really the issue on the severance damages, trying to calculate what that valuation really was. How much was the adjacent property that we still retain affected by this splitting by the flood control district? But really, if you look forward to what the eventual use would be, it shouldn't really affect us.
Any other question? Oh, yes, Councilman Laura Tannen.
I just have a quick, thank you so much. And it was riveting, really. When, when do we see the money? When do they write us the check? Because I see, I see satisfaction of judgment, interest. I'm like.
You, you see that all the time, don't you?
When do we get the money?
Well, it's, it's in the flood controls district to get this closed up as quick as possible because then the statutory interest stops. So the discussion at the settlement conference was within a month. And we're already kind of. of into that period. So, it's approval of the two boards and finishing up the license agreement, which I saw draft on Friday, was pretty close to being done.
Perfect. It's nice to have a lawyer on the council when you have questions like this.
That's what no one can pay.
Listen.
Show me the money.
Okay. All discussion finished? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed a 6-0.
Great, thank you, all right. We're finally at the information items. Does council have any comments? Accommodation reports on current events? Yes, Councilman Holman?
Yes, I, this afternoon, we had a fascinating tour at Australia Mountain Community College, and I was able to vision or to see what they had done to Australia Hall, and through the conversation, I realized that it was 23 years ago that I walked through Australia the first time.
My.
And what a difference in that building. Of course, we've gone from 800 students to 8,700 students at Australia Hall now. So, it was really a very eye-opening experience for me, and they've also cordoned off the area where they're going to start the Performing Arts Center, which is very, very exciting as well, as well as the new community room. It has always been, I think, a source of pride in our community, but I think it has just done an amazing job of making it look very cohesive as well. And the other thing that I wanted to comment on, that is a local organization, was the Brighter Day luncheon for the New Life Center, which is an annual event. Well done. They promise you they only keep you there for an hour, and by George, you start at 12, and you're at by 1:00 and maybe 2 minutes before that.
Absolutely right.
But anybody gets an invitation to go to that, it's open to everyone, it's annual, it's this time of year, but it really is touching the heart, and a real source of pride for our community is that the number, the percentage of women that do not go back into the situation again is 95%, which is unheard of in the industry. So, that's a couple of the things I did.
I have, thank you, I have the same sentiments you do, and when I attended that, I was really impressed. Next, yes, Councilman Osborne?
Well, I have pages and pages about the Seattle trip that we were just at, the National League of Cities, and I'm not, I'm going to type them up and just give them to you all, but a couple of highlights I just wanted to let you know on. First of all, I did attend the Read On Summit, the first summit that they had for the Read On and literacy situation. It was, it was very educational and good, but, and the Pebble Creek Veterans Day Parade. You know, I'm always appreciative that we have that within our community and recognizing the veterans. But as for the League of Cities, a couple of things, I had a class on managing the municipal message, and a couple of things, quite a few things I took out of that, but, you know, it was also interesting to hear of other cities that did YouTube videos, and how they actually had the mayor, you know, doing a little video of, this is your city hall, this is this department, and introducing people, it was like telling the story. And also, another city had, on their website, they had a guestbook. They actually had, where people came onto the website, and they were able to log in and say, hey, this was so-and-so, and I, you know, it was a guestbook of signing into your city, which was really interesting. I attended the Park Conference of the Let's Move Campaign, had my Human Development and Youth Education and Families Committee meeting, few classes on finance for infrastructure and transportation, and then a presentation of different cities, different sizes, of how they multimodal transportation with trails, bikeways, paths, things like that, just all encompassing, and probably, I would have to say, something that really resonated with me was from the mayor, the statement the mayor of Oklahoma City had given. He said, "We were a perfect city if we were a car. No traffic congestion, but we were in the top of the nation as the most obese city." And I thought, in the 10 years, I think it was 10 years, that they've taken to change their city because they had no sidewalks, they didn't have paths. He even, himself, he said, "I looked in the mirror, and I realized I was 40 pounds overweight." And it was just a change of a culture of a city, and that really was impressive. And so, a couple of things I picked up, just for Nathan, the true life stories of Real World Tools, a bicycle-friendly America, and also, this was something Sheri and I discussed too, was when we were going through some of the different, and you, I know, got a whole bag full of stuff, all the different people that build things for cities, here's some great ideas for water park type of things, making a destination, right Sheri, things that we looked at. So, I give you those, and I will write up all this stuff and give it to you all, okay?
I liked the water park, because I remember when they came a few years and presented it, and I think it was a Japanese company, and it was a huge building, do you remember that? It had surfing in it, a sandy beach, and all kinds of things, and we loved that building, we just couldn't afford to put it in the city. They were asking a little bit too much, but, boy, I get excited when I hear that. Who's next?
Oh, I'm going to do mine next time.
Okay, all right.
Lots to give, I know.
Councilman Laura Tano?
I'll just be really brief, because the takeaways, and this wasn't like a building, this was like slides that went down for the water park, which was really cool, and they also had Nathan a really cool teeter totter that Wally has information for you on. May find a picture of us on it. My takeaway was really a lot of the technology being up in Seattle, Microsoft was up there, and there's a lot of smart buildings, when we do our buildings, that we can have people do smart applications for the city, just, and I'll talk to Brian about some of the things, that it was just amazing, the technology that is out there, that is easy to use, that is in the cloud, that is cost-effective. Did the Veterans Day Parade, which was just wonderful, and I just want to wish everybody a happy, safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Again, the New Life Shelter was at the event, that is, that is something that you know, we can all be proud of. But on a lighter side, I was proud to take a trip to the North Pole this weekend with the girls to see Santa Claus, and they, well, I got the coal, but the girls, they got bells, and they had a great time up there, so, for anybody who hasn't been there on the Polar Express, I mean, it is, it is a lot of fun.
Well, I also, I think everybody's done, I'll just mention, I just want to mention Pebble Creek and the Veterans Day Parade, and a lot of residents attended that that were not from the area, and it got so much attention that Channel 15 and 12 covered the fact they, my husband was one of the speakers on that, and so, they asked him and two other retired military in full uniform to go on television in both of those channels. So, it was really a tribute to know that, because sometimes we get criticized that we haven't had one right within our city, but Pebble Creek has done such a good job, and the city's welcome to do that, and they do have that great memorial that sits within the community, and people can come and visit that, and you can even have a, buy a brick. You don't have to live in Pebble Creek to buy a brick for someone in your family who has served for our country. So, I just want to give a shout-out to them, because I really, I really appreciate that. So, now, I'll turn this over to the City Manager. Do you have anything to report or any follow-ups?
Mayor, Members of the Council, I do have a couple of follow-ups and then three announcements. One is, and this was follow-up for the work session, but Romina will be getting you, sending you an email, the four different questions, or the questions that can be considered for the survey, so that'll be gotten out to you tomorrow, if it's not already. And then, the other is, just wanted to ensure that we are going to use many different tools to get the word out as far as getting people to participate in the survey, so we'll let you know what those venues are. Regarding the council meeting itself, one thing that Teri Canada mentioned in her presentation is, in the second quarter is when you get the detailed report on the supplementals. It was premature this time, but I wanted to make sure, because that had come up from council before, so that will be part of that presentation.
Great, thank you.
I think that was it for follow-up. In regards to announcements, there are a couple. Actually, we have a famous person in the audience who was presenter at the Valley Partnership Meeting last Friday, Sheri Wakefield-Sines. Mayor, you were there as well.
Yes, and we were very proud, very proud of her.
Absolutely, and this, the whole subject for, and several hundred people in the, in the room, it was all about the 303 corridor. So, presenters were Sheri, who again, did an amazing job, Greg Vogel with Land Advisors, Jack Razor, who's one of the originals from the old West Core Group, so he's West Core Development Partners, they've since sold out to Mace Rich, and Kevin Zawinski, who is Principal and President of Merritt Partners, which is a development of Sunbelt. The only reason I wanted to point out those speakers is, every one of them gave huge accolades as far as City of Goodyear in terms of how we've come a long way in our development processes and working with us, and then just the excitement for the area in terms of building. I got to tell you, when 300 or 400, how many ever people were in the audience heard that, we showed very well, so, Sheri, thank you very much for your part of that. The, there you go. And I'll have her give a speech another day. Small Business Saturday, November 30th, this is one of those that we do it the day after Black Friday, and it's to encourage shopping in City of Goodyear this holiday season. So, the Economic Development Division is participating in the national promotion known as Small Business Saturday, again, November 30th. It's dedicated to supporting, supporting small businesses around the country. It was actually founded by American Express in 2010, so I guess you don't leave home without it, but it's celebrated every year, and it happens to be November 30 this year. So, anyone that does a purchase in Goodyear and collects those receipts can turn them in, as long as that purchase was done on the 30th, and we will do a drawing for prizes on December the 11th. But it's really trying to promote shopping within the city limits of Goodyear to the extent possible, so, with a greater emphasis on shopping at our local independent retailers. That's always good news. And then, the last item is the Annual Employee Appreciation Event. We know our employees are our greatest asset. We have an opportunity to recognize a lot of accomplishments by the different departments. We're doing that this Friday, and it'll be from noon to 5:00. So, we will be closing City Hall at noon in honor of that event, or actually, so you can, we can all participate in that. So, if council, Mayor and council, if you do end up attending, be very pleased to have you say a few remarks to the employees, because we'll all be there. If you have questions, please, please let me know. That's all I have.
Great, well, thank you very much. The next work session and regular meeting will be held on December 2nd. And if there's no further business, then this meeting is adjourned.